We'll wait until the pastor gets here. Pastor gets here. Pastor text me said he'd be here.
2021 regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Kirk Patrick will be joining us this morning on a telephone call. So Kirk, are you up there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance and then after that, our pastor Josh Frazier will give us our invocation. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
Clinton, we just give the life of the United States of America to you, the government, which stands one nation, the God of our God, in the reasonable, liberty, justice of our all.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for all the things that life brings to us. We thank you for the wisdom and the courage to be able to face those things in times of need and times of hardship. I thank you for what these group of people who represent our county do for us and I pray that you would give them wisdom and guidance in all that they do. I thank you for the great decisions they have made to keep our county together, operating properly, and doing everything that it takes to fill these positions. I pray for all the rest of our government officials and pray that you'd give them wisdom and guidance too. All this we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Josh.
Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing, but we haven't done this morning. And then our next order of business is our public comment session. I only have one person that signed up to speak. Mary Piazza, I'm sorry. Come on up, Mary.
Good morning, Commissioner. On December 14th, for those of you who were commissioners at that time, I emailed each of you information on SARS-CoV-2 resulting in COVID-19. In the information were two peer-reviewed medical journal articles explaining that SARS-CoV-2 was a manufactured virus using gain-of-function technology. Gain-of-function is a term used regarding bioweapons, not naturally occurring viruses. I also testified here in front of the commission on December 14th, 2020, and submitted those articles in hard copy to the clerk. The articles also documented that gain-of-function work was done at the BSL III lab at UNC at Chapel Hill. My question, gentlemen, is did you read the material that was sent to you in the emails? This was before the inoculation was rolled out. The shots are being distributed under EUA, Emergency Youth Authorization, and have not been FDA-approved. The shots are experimental by definition. Therefore, this is a vaccine trial and it is illegal to force anyone to participate in a vaccine trial. It's been found that the spike protein in the inoculation is a toxin, which is why we're seeing side effects such as blood clots, neurological issues, and bleeding. Currently, 117 medical workers at Methodist Hospital in Houston filed a lawsuit against the hospital because workers were forced to take the inoculation or lose their jobs. This is also an issue that I posed here on December 14th, 2020, requesting that the commission make a statement in writing that inoculations would not be forced in the workplace jeopardizing workers' jobs here in Haywood County. The fallout of this bioweapon has been globally monumental. The connection to the BSL lab at UNC Chapel Hill and the grant that the UNC received to do gain-of-function experiments here puts all humans at risk of another release of a bioweapon, but especially the North Carolina population. The Chapel Hill lab needs to be investigated. The American people as a whole are losing their faith in our government. We're seeing our First and Second Amendments rights being dismantled. Underage children are succumbing to radical surgeries to change their gender without their parents' permission. These are surgeries that they cannot recover from if they change their minds as adults, which many do. This is happening here and now in Haywood County. The issues are escalating to a crescendo. This is not the America I grew up in, and I believe you can say the same. It's a great privilege to be a public servant, however, that comes with great responsibility. Your constituents are speaking. I hope you are listening and taking what they're saying to heart. Our children are at great risk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. I don't have anyone else signed up. Would anyone else like to address the board this morning? Okay. I meant to say too that you have three minutes and they'll politely let you know when your three minutes is up and then I'll, you know, if you would, just finish your comments. So welcome this morning and state your name and maybe where you're from.
I'm Kitty Kern. I'm from Maggie Valley, North Carolina. I run a business in Maggie Valley and I just wanted to come here and say that I'm actually opposed to the jail expansion. I really think our resources should go towards preventing people from getting to jail rather than locking them up after they've already prevented the crime. That doesn't help the community at all and it just kind of uses up our resources that could be better spent. You know, like we could put earmark money. I know you guys had said that VIA is in control of the Behavioral Health Center, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't like earmark money and donate it towards that specific, oh, hello, specific program of reopening the, you know, 24-hour behavioral health program because that not only it helps our community, it also helps the police by giving them resources besides jail to, you know, help our citizens. It helps with mental health. It helps with the drug addictions that you guys say that you're, you know, for helping the community against. So I just, I think that our money would be better spent, again, preventing crime rather than locking people up after it's already happened. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the board this morning? I'll close, I don't see anyone else, but I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to constituent concerns and.
Yeah, I have had some. I think we've tried to address most of them though. Have a question about some noise at the fairgrounds and it's just several things. Yeah.
Same thing. I've had some that I've got with Mr. Morehead on and we've addressed.
Tell me, you got anything?
No, what I've had related to the county staff and they've handled.
Get Kirk. Yeah. Kirk, have you got any?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is agency administrative reports and presentations. We have our, for the first item is the Carolina Backyard Naturalists Program. Haywood Extension Agent Sam Marshall and Cooperative Extension Director Bill Skelton is here this morning to talk about this. Welcome, Bill and Sam.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bill Skelton. I'm with the Haywood County Center of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service. And just a quick reminder, we are part of the NC State University Cooperative Extension Program and sisterhood also with North Carolina A&amp;T State University Cooperative Extension Program. And as such, we have an office in each county across the state. We are thrilled to have the office here in Haywood County and appreciate y'all's support. One of the things that we have tried to do particularly over this last year is to have more and more online opportunities for programming and we just wanted to highlight one of the successes that we've had this year. Sam Marshall was the coordinator of this particular program, the Backyard Naturalists Program. It was a joint effort with two or three other agents across the state as well as a graduate student, I believe. So I'm gonna let Sam begin and talk about that. Sam?
Good morning. Thank you for having me today. And we're, I'm really excited to be able to present what we were doing last year with the Backyard Naturalists Program. Several years ago, when I lived in Wilmington, a colleague and I saw a real need for more environmental literacy, environmental programs in general, mainly because of the influx of people moving into North Carolina, North Carolina being one of the fastest-growing states in the country. So we saw a real opportunity to raise more awareness for the natural resources and the biodiversity here in North Carolina. Fast forward to last year with COVID and being online, we saw an opportunity to expand this program as a statewide program. So last year with the Carolina Backyard Naturalists Program, this doesn't seem to be working, that's okay. We expanded this to a statewide program. We had over 500 participants. We had to increase our Zoom license just to accommodate everybody. And we had a waitlist, current waitlist for 2021 of 150 people for the fall offering. So we really just, again, we wanted to raise awareness for, you know, the biodiversity that exists here in North Carolina as people are moving here and wanting to learn more about the state in which they live. As a North Carolinian, I'm proud to call this state home and to be from here. So we had several partnering organizations with North Carolina Climate Office, North Carolina Aquarium at Fort Fisher, the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, and several other agencies that we partnered with for the program. We can move through that one too. Yeah, so last year, we, again, we had 500 registrations. We had an average weekly participation of 250 registered folks. And then we had a documented, we documented significant impact in knowledge, improvement in knowledge as a result of the program. But we also saw a raw opportunity to grow this program. We kind of realized very quickly that one of the limiting resources for folks was internet connectivity and access to internet at home. So we wanted to do better. And this spring, we actually partnered with a master student from Duke University from the Nicholas School of the Environment to help us create a better marketing plan so that we could reach a more economically and ethnically inclusive and ethnically diverse audience. So we identified some barriers to access and we have developed a strategic marketing plan to promote the Backyard Naturalists Program for all North Carolina residents. I think that's it. Just a few more things. We will be offering the class again this fall. It will be online for the class portion of that, but we're also going to be offering regional field trip opportunities so folks who are in western North Carolina can attend more local events to get outside. As we're doing more in-person stuff now, it's important that we get people engaged with the world where they're living. So I appreciate your time. I have some information up here if anybody wants it. And again, thank you for having me.
Where do you do the field trips at?
So right now, we don't know where we're doing those field trips. We plan on doing, you know, here in Haywood County with having Smoky Mountains, you know, in our county, we'll probably be doing several field trips out there partnering with, you know, wildlife and botany experts to lead field trips and several. And with counties and other counties in the state, they'll be coordinating with their local resources to set those field trips up. Yeah.
Who is the, who is the average person that participated?
So our, we did take that, the demographics, 95% of our registrants were white. Most were, had some sort of education beyond high school. I believe about 90% of our registrations had a bachelor's degree and about 20% had a master's or higher at level education. So again, you know, the purpose of this program is not to be exclusive to people who already have a background in, you know, higher education. We want to create a program that's accessible for everybody so that they can feel included, that they can learn. And that's, that is the whole point of what we do with extension is try to reach all of our underserved audiences in North Carolina.
I just, you know, one other comment is to our knowledge, this is probably the first backyard naturalist program that Extension at least has been involved with in the state, across the state.
It is the first naturalist program in the state. Other states do have naturalist programs. This is the first.
Right. And so we're excited to have one of the leaders of this program here in the Haywood County Extension Center. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just thanks for the job you guys do over there. It's important.
Just curious, Bill, what classifies an area as a biodiversity hotspot?
Oh, yeah, you probably have that.
Just curious.
So the Nature Conservancy identified biodiversity hotspots throughout the country. If we can pull that map back up, you can look at the map or the image of North Carolina. Biodiversity hotspot just relates to essentially how much biodiversity exists within a region. So the Appalachian region, as the colors increase, as they get from green to red, the darker the color, the more biodiverse a region is. So obviously here in western North Carolina, we have a huge amount of biodiversity. And especially with increase in urbanization and urban sprawl and loss of that habitat, it's even more and more vital to protect those resources. So that's, that's essentially what that biodiversity hotspot tells us. Any other questions?
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, our next item in agency reports is, would be introduction of new county employees. And we have our county manager, Brian Morehead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through May 17th, we had several new employees to announce at the sheriff's office. We have Christopher Lacy, Melina Ridley, Cassie Ash, Sandy Ledford, Andrew Banks. Health and Human Services, we have Heather Koontz, Samantha Barley, and Haley Birchfield. Facilities and Maintenance, Joshua Underwood, and Library Sarah Reiser. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate those folks wanting to work for Haywood County because it's hard to find employees right now. Okay, so our next order of business, does anybody have any questions on, for Brian? Our next order of business is our consent agenda. And does any commissioner have any questions about anything on the consent agenda this morning? Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Is our next order of business and our first item is to request approval of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget ordinance. And we have our county manager, Brian Morehead, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've seen basically the presentation three different times. The ordinance before you contains a tax rate of 53 and a half cents and all of the items that we've discussed previously, most of which are related to employee compensation to fund the classification and pay study. We are replacing lots of vehicles. We've got more money budgeted to take care of our facilities. That's it in a nutshell. Mr. Chairman, I can answer any questions the board may have.
Anybody have any questions for Brian about the budget?
Mr. Morehead, have we got any more information back on the pay study and what we had last time we spoke?
We did get more details on Thursday afternoon. We actually have a meeting with Evergreen scheduled for later this week. It's complicated and so we're waiting for Evergreen to work us through that, but tentative look through the departments. We've got some positions that are fairly off-market. So hope to hear more on Thursday with Evergreen on how they recommend that we approach it.
Do I have any other questions or comments? I guess I'll entertain a motion. We approve the item one of the regular agenda.
I'm making motion we approve item one of the regular agenda to approve the fiscal year budget as presented by County Manager Brian Morehead.
Is your second?
I'll second that.
So any discussion?
I've got a few comments, Kevin.
Okay.
I've got a few comments, Kevin. I just want to make it clear that I support the pay study and in favor of whatever the pay study tells us, which we think that's going to show some increases in salaries, probably significant. But I am in awe and favor of bringing those folks up to where they need to be. I think that we need to take care of our employees. I've always been a big supporter of that. I do that. I did that when I was a manager over at the plant. I do that at my own business. And I think we need to do it here in the county. You need to always take care of the people that help you and help the county and support the county. So I want to make that clear this morning before we do vote. I was hoping that we could balance the budget and stay revenue neutral, which looks like it's going to be tough to do, but I guess I'm still holding out that we could give it a little more time and possibly do that. Our revenues are still coming in strong. Our fund balance is the best that it's been in years, probably the best it's ever been. And that is the people's money, as I said before. And I think that we need to pull some more of those funds from our fund balance, if at all possible. You know, again, I'd like to take a little more time to dig into that, to see if there is any way we can still balance the budget and stay revenue neutral. But again, I just want to make it real clear that I am in support of whatever the pay study says, or probably one of the ones that's pushed that from the beginning, that we need to do it. Unfortunately, we hadn't done it in years past, and we've waited for so long that it's put us in its mind. But again, I support the pay study and willing to do whatever needed to bring our folks up to speed. In the long run, we're going to save money, which I realize, which is going to help us. Again, it's why I'm saying what I'm saying on my vote this morning. And again, I think I said it earlier, but our debt is going to continue to roll off within the next several years. We have a significant amount of debt that's coming off. So again, I just wanted to make those things clear this morning before our vote.
I've got a couple of comments, too. Also, Mr. Chairman, I back up Commissioner Rogers about keeping our employees up where they need to be. Pouring over this budget, looking at the budget, 2% merit raise, 2% COLA is going to get us close to where we need to be in talking with the county manager. The $2.4 million that's going to be generated with a 2.5 cents, that's basically a wash. When you consider the budget as proposed, given that 2% merit and 2% COLA raise, you also have to remember we're funding our Sheriff's Department, who requested 13 patrol cars. We also are funding our EMS, and we're going to have to have two new ambulances done this year. And when you throw that in, plus last year, our 911 call center had requested help, our call time, response time was getting a little bit out of hand, and so we kicked that down the road last year. And within this budget, it includes six new positions for our 911 call center, which also includes putting one person, an extra person per shift. And then you have to buy the console and all the electronics and all that. So basically, the increase is basically balanced to scale. So when I look at this, I do say it's revenue neutral because we're so far behind on our pay scale and the needs. You know, I've always been a needs-based person. I don't want to be extravagant. But as far as public safety concerned, I think you'll see this board has always been strong with public safety. We'll continue to be, fund our Sheriff's Department, our people like to lay down at night and feel safe. And so that's the position we're in, and as the budget is presented in this fashion, I can kind of wholeheartedly make a motion to accept it.
Thank you.
Just a few notes about the 2021, 22 budget. Like my fellow commissioners have spent quite a bit of time reviewing the proposed budget, and I appreciate Brian and Will. They have been very patient with me. I asked for a line-by-line review, which took several hours on the first meeting. I've had several subsequent meetings and many, many phone calls with lots of questions. And this is most likely the most difficult decision I've made since I've been seated, and frankly, I see the pros and cons for both sides. If we adopt the budget, we will reflect a nickel decrease from the current rate, bringing the rate from 58.5 to 53.5, which is certainly a decrease in our rate. And I stated that I was originally committed to revenue neutral, which would be 50.78 cents. It is because of my commitment to a neutral rate that I cannot vote for the proposed budget today. The need to increase wages for employees is one of our major driving factors in this year's budget, and unfortunately, counties and municipalities often balance their budget on wages, salaries, and benefits. I'd like to delve into that a little further real quickly and just say that I'd like to be very clear about why I'm voting the way I am. I continue to be very thankful for the job that all of our county employees do. I'm impressed at every intersection, anytime something comes up of how things are handled. And the true services of the county are the employees. We can purchase the best ambulance trucks. We can purchase the best computer software, but it's not the truck, it is the employee. It is the paramedic that shows up. It is the person that works in the tax assessor's office or the clerk's office. Those are the services of our county. And so I never want anybody to think that I would, in any way, would ever vote against bringing our county employees up to market. I think they do an outstanding job, and I think to identify, develop, and secure employees is becoming more difficult for all companies in the county, especially us. And we're going head-to-head with all of the people that have come, go-to-work-for-us signs hanging on their door. I've entertained myself recently by photographing all the people in the county that are hiring. And so we've worked, the county before me, the Commissioner Board, has worked very hard for two years to start to bring those employees up. The findings of the employment study should identify the departments that are behind and then allow the wage shortfalls to be corrected. And so I look forward to seeing that. So to summarize, the budget vote has given me great concern, and frankly, I can provide reasons to vote for either side. However, the county is in a strong financial position. Our balance, our fund balance far exceeds the fund balance recommended by the state and exceeds the counties that are around us. Our state sales collection, although likely not sustainable, was extremely high this year, and our real estate continues to trend upward, which are all indicators of strong local economy. I am a steward of taxpayers' dollars, that is taxpayer collected revenue, and I'm working with your money. And so in conclusion, the financial indicators I just mentioned, combined with my earlier commitment to remain revenue neutral, will prevent me from voting for the proposed budget today.
Kirk, did you want to say anything? I know you said something at the last meeting.
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay, Kevin?
Yeah, we can hear you good.
Okay. So I understand everybody's perspective this morning, and I share some of the same concerns. I guess my concern is that we're dealing with knowns and unknowns. And the known we have is the fact that we have to increase our employees' pay. And once we do that, we can't ever decrease our employees' pay. I mean, you can try to, but the likelihood of it is not good. So delving into fund balance to make sure that we have the money to pay the employees is just not a good financial practice. So that's what I'm concerned about, because we have to set that year after year after year. And so if we go ahead and change the rate and incorporate the increase for the pay of employees, we'll have that year after year. Now, in the future, what our unknown is, is the revenues that are coming in, and hopefully they'll continue to come in. And then we'll have some liabilities that drop off, and maybe we can change the rate at that point in time, once we see we have increased revenues and decreased liabilities. But at this point in time, that's kind of an unknown. So in order to make sure that our employees are taken care of, I think we need to pass the proposed budget.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, and I would just say I want to thank our staff, because I know they start on the budget probably in January, right, right, or even before that. And so you guys have meetings, it's like six months, five or six months, you're in meetings for the budget, and then you have a little bit of a rest, but maybe seven months to where you don't have to worry about a budget, but other than, you know, keeping us on budget and everything. So I want to thank our staff and your hard work. And I got to thinking about our fund balance, and in 2009, our fund balance was about 9%. If we were to borrow to balance this budget that Bryant's presented, we would take all the money that was in the fund balance in 2009, because it would be close to $8 million. That would have made our fund balance zero in 2009 if we had done what we're doing today. So if we was to go back to, you know, try to fund the budget without a little bit of an increase, and I guess I'm a little bit protective of the fund balance because Mark Kirk, Mark Swanger, Kirk, and Mike Searls, and Bill Upton, and I worked really hard to get the fund balance back from the 9% up to where it is today. And we are at around, or slightly above, the state average, which is a good thing. And we also have, as Kirk pointed out last time, projects coming on that I would like to take probably some money from the fund balance to be able, so we can lower our payments on that. So I want to be able to do that in the future. This budget this year, this tax rate that Bryant's proposing puts us up to 15th in the state. So 85 counties will have a higher tax rate than Haywood County does. So that puts us in the top 15 in the state, and I'm proud of that. One thing about the revenue neutral rate, we had to calculate, I noticed, we had to use 2020's numbers, and 2020's numbers were lower than the prior two years. So what you do is to average your growth, you use the last three years. Well, we had to use the COVID year for one of ours, and of course, it's going to make it, it's going to knock it way down. So we couldn't use the good growth that we're going to experience this year, I believe, and in the years, you know, in the future. We weren't able to use that year to factor into this revenue neutral rate, and I think it would be a little bit higher if we were able to, if we'd had a normal year. And I've also gotten emails, and I think I shared one with you, I got this weekend, from people in the Development Services that are very concerned with the lack of staff that we have in Environmental Services. And that's been directly related to, I work with that department every day. You might as well say I work with them every day on some issue, which I'm mainly talking about septic evaluations, and then we also have our billing inspections. And I've had to work with them, and they are seven weeks behind. They're down to two to three staff members. They should have probably six, I think, and it's hard to find people to work in that office. And the ones we have lost have been to pay. I can think of three right off the very top of my head in the last couple, three years that we've lost due to salary. And those are either to other counties or to the private sector. So every day, I get questions about this, and I'm hoping, you know, I feel like I need to do something to try to help do that. And I know Bryant's really looking at that. It's not like you can just hire anybody to do this. They have to have certifications. Our mountain soils are a lot different than it is probably even in Buckham County, and definitely down east. So when we try to get folks here to work those jobs, they have to really have, get a good knowledge of what the soils are in our area. So that's another issue. So I want us to be able to keep good staff. That's just one department that I deal with. I know we've got DSS, the sheriff, I know he's, he had some trouble in the past keeping people because of the low pay, and we've tried to bump that up. And I know, so I know the sheriff has had trouble retaining folks, and we really need to get to the market study, because that's safety. Building Development Services, in a way, Development Services are like, you know, in a way, we're providing, we have our ordinances in place for people to follow, which is good for the health and safety of everybody. But we've, you know, when we're following those ordinances, it expands county services, and we've got to be able to provide those services within a reasonable amount of time. And unfortunately, we're not being able to do that right now in Development Services, and that's one of the biggest industries in the county. If you consider all the building trades, attorneys, real estate agents, surveyors, landscapers, you know, all those plumbers, electricians, all those building trades are really important. And so it's almost like an economic boost, if you will, for us to provide those good services, I look at it in a way. We have businesses coming to us asking for us to help them with their, you know, business expansion or new business coming in here. And in a way, our big industry in Haywood County is our housing industry. So we've got to be able to provide those services to keep that industry, you know, really thriving and strong, if you will. The longer it takes to build a house, the less houses, the higher the cost of the house, and the less affordable housing we'll have also. But anyway, I'm going to support the budget for those reasons this morning, so. Does anybody else have anything?
Just one comment, I know it wasn't brought up, but we are using 5.9 million from the fund balance to float this budget, is that correct, Mr. Moorhead? And also, if I read it wrong, I apologize, but I think I read in a local publication where of all the elected boards in the county, municipalities, aldermen, I think this board has reduced the rate more than anybody, and we kept the least amount above last year's projected revenue neutral. I think Canton went up 4 cents, Clyde went up 5 cents, Maggie and Waynesville somewhere around that. But, you know, so it is noteworthy, we are using 5.9 million from our fund balance in this year's budget.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those are passed?
No.
Reposed.
Okay, so that passes three to two. So I appreciate everybody. And I think that shows how tough the budget was for us to, you know, to have about as much agreement as you can have on a five-member board. Next, I'll move, we'll move to item number two of the regular agenda, is to request approval of a budget amendment for $3,000 from the Sheriff's Office to appropriate donations to the Sheriff's Office made in fiscal year 2020 that were unspent. And we have our Finance Director, Kristin Owen, here.
Good morning. This is to appropriate $3,000 in donations that was received at the Sheriff's Department from fiscal year 2020 that went unspent, and so they rolled into fund balance. So this would come from fund balance for them to use for uniforms.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve item two of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, item number three is to request approval of a budget amendment for $25,000 to the Sheriff's Office to cover vehicle repairs and maintenance for the remainder of the fiscal year 2021. Go ahead.
Yes, this is $25,000 that will come from contingencies to cover the repairs and maintenance. I believe Sheriff Christopher worked with Bryant to come up with that number, and that should carry us through the end of the fiscal year.
Is anybody having questions about that?
Is that just a projected need based on past maintenance needs for the remainder calendar days left in this fiscal year?
Yes, and items that they know are coming up, that there is a shortfall in. So that will, that should carry us to the end of the fiscal year.
Any other questions for Chris? Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Just one comment. We actually increased for the budget that just got passed, the repair and maintenance vehicles account in the Sheriff's Budget. The trend is, even though we've been replacing nine, 11, and 13 vehicles, the cost of maintenance is just creeping up, so we've increased it. So hopefully, what we budgeted for this year keeps us from having to come back this time next year for another appropriation.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve item three of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Kirk. Okay, the next item is, item number four, is to request approval of Mountain Projects' request for proposals for transportation operations and management services. Approval of contracts designated in Haywood County as a subrecipient of Federal Transit Administration 5307 funds administered via the City of Asheville, and approval of transportation contract between Mountain Projects as the provider and Haywood County. Kristin, go ahead. Christian, go ahead.
Yes, we did a grant for 2020 to solicit bids for this urban route. And the French Broad MPO selected Mountain Projects as the winner of that process. So this is to accept their findings. And you'll find all of that in the attachment. I think there's about 11 pages of details of what was reviewed. And then there are two contracts, one between Haywood County and City of Asheville that will establish us as a subrecipient of the funds that will flow through us to Mountain Projects. And then the last is a contract between Haywood County and Mountain Projects about the administration of those funds.
And I know Si is here this morning from Mountain Projects.
Yes. And he would be the person to ask specific questions.
What will this go for specifically, Si, as far as, you know, services to the citizens?
The service won't change at all. Right now, we're conducting a 5307 urban route, paratransit route. It's in place, Mountain Air West, Black Bear East buses on a fixed route. So nothing really changes. The amount of work for Kristin and her office, it changes because of the subrecipient. But we'll continue to assist them and do all the paperwork and do all the reporting like we have for the City of Asheville in the past. But the service won't change at all. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good. Brian, Brandon, I know you're on that board.
Yeah, I just wanted to brag on Si and Mountain Projects for a few minutes. I know Kevin and I went out and visited with them some time ago. And they do a lot of amazing things. And even back during the pandemic, those guys were coming in, delivering meals to people that couldn't get out. And just all they do, I know people seeing the Black Bear bus that's riding around town, and the Mountain Air bus on this side of town. And I just want them to know publicly, I appreciate what you guys do. And Si, you do a great job. Thank you.
Okay, see, we can, well, let's see. So I'll entertain a motion that we approve item four.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, any other discussion? All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I will say, see, we can, we can get along with Asheville every now and then.
Which figures money, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. We're taking their money. So, okay, so our next order of, that's all for our regular agenda, correct? Okay. We have no appointments. Our next order of business is a closed session. And we have three items in closed session. One's, number one is personnel, 143-318.11A6. Economic development, number two, 143-318.11A4. And number three, acquisition of real property, 143-318.11A5. And, is that, okay. So all those in favor of going into closed session, say, I mean, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion, go to closed session.
Or second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back.
Okay, we've returned from closed session. Does anybody, is there any other business before the board? Here and now, entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at you now. Everybody be safe out there and have a good day.